Verification. Sorry. All right, thanks. All right, Truce had the pledge. Sean, do you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and Tom, do you want to give us our mission statement tonight?
Serve with passion to ignite creativity, innovation, and excellence.
All right, for roll call, we've got six to seven board members. One is excused with the family, and Ryan, your team is here.
My team is all here.
Okay, let's look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, we will continue on. Under reports, item A, strategic initiatives update by the superintendent management team. And Ryan, board, do we have questions or anything else we'd like to know about the reports that were included?
I'll leave the change of the semester stuff to our two student reps, so they can go into that. Last Tuesday was going to be our first day back from, obviously, semester break that one day, but due to the inclement weather, we had a cold day, so that's a freebie. We will have a make, if we have another one, we'll make up that day on Friday, March 21st. I just, just so the board is aware, I did send a heads up to our administrative staff here on Friday. There has been rumors about immigration custom enforcement coming into school buildings. I did have some confirmed cases from other places across the state this weekend. There's been some rumors that it happened in La Crosse. Those are strictly rumors that didn't happen, but I just want to remind everybody, per our policy 5230, no student shall be released to anyone who is not authorized by a parent with authority to do so following building procedures. So it's just a reminder to our building principals that we follow our building procedures and we don't release kids unless we get that okay from their parents. So I just want to make the board aware of that, that we've had that communication across the district and, you know, just to dispel some of the rumors that are out there about some local schools, but I have heard stories of that actually happening in some of the bigger metropolitan areas.
Okay. Any further questions on those reports before we move on? All right, next up is education convention highlights by attendees. Tom, do you want to go first?
No.
Thanks for being a good sport.
So I think I attended the school finance puzzle for like the fifth time. And this, every time I attended, it's something new. This time, we actually did not go over our worksheet, which the past four times we always have. We sort of discussed what was being done as far as proposals to Governor Evers, trying to get special ed up to 60% funding. Last year, it was 32.4% funding we received for it. They also talked about when we were froze in 1993 for the per pupil, and we just started getting some increases. The increases, like we're getting 325 per child or something like that, per pupil, does not cover the cost of inflation, which is actually at 420. So even though we are getting money, or more money for the pupil, it doesn't cost, cover our inflation. And they factored over the, since we were froze till now, if we would have not been frozen, if we would have stayed up with CPI, that would be an extra 6,000 per student we'd be getting on top of what we're getting now. So that was a huge, which we would have never had to go out for our referendum at that point. So, I mean, that's just a huge wake-up call. So we had that, and then the next thing, as far as costs go, I attended managing a self-insured health program, which I sent to all of you guys here. And the only other person I think I sent it to that's not here was our HR. But there was some really, really interesting stats in how they set up a self-funded and where they put like a coverage for umbrella that you can get just in case of catastrophic emergencies, things like that. They were talking about drug plans that you can get from pharmacies that are exactly the same as the name brand, I mean, in every identical way, for a third of the cost. And then picking specific coverages and then dealing with your local, like hospitals and stuff like that and getting specifics. I mean, they had everything down to, okay, who do you go to to get a scan? And they'd have that as a line item in the insurance policy. And then it sets a deductible anyways. So, but it was pretty neat, and it, everything was based off of Greendale School District. And they actually got their insurance down to a 250 copay and a $250 out-of-pocket for the entire year. And I just thought that was such a huge thing. And because basically, right now, with our insurance coverages, if anything major happens or price goes up, the entire policy increases to 25%, 30%, where when you go to the self-insured and just get specifics on what you're looking at and break them out individually, only pieces of them will go up instead of the entire coverage. So I think we could really save some money. I sent everybody the packet, the lady that led it, the finance officer at Greendale. I would highly recommend that at some point, we have Edman get in touch and just have a presentation that we can all see. So that was my huge highlight. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I guess I can go next and then turn it over to Ryan. I attended CISA Board Appreciation Breakfast on Wednesday morning. We did celebrate that it was the 60th year for CISA's to exist in the state of Wisconsin. So that's a big deal. They're a real benefit to districts, both large and small, to be able to share resources and provide better experiences. Another one that I enjoyed was on the school board's role in financial oversight as far as what type of financial reports we should be seeing on a regular basis, and just like what level of detail we should be getting at the board and what we should be paying attention to. I also, there was a session that was on a registered apprenticeship program that the Department of Workforce Development is piloting in Wisconsin. It's a way to identify someone that is interested in that profession and have the district sponsor them from an early point on. They still have to go through all of the required, you know, training and certification classes. You don't skip a step. It's just another pathway where some schools are doing sponsorship and then they're employed with the district during that time. So essentially, the student teaching, you know, counts as employment as opposed to volunteering those hours. It seemed like it was really interesting, and it's another way to, you know, maybe reach people that would be good in the profession that we might not otherwise reach. So just glad to see that, and that was interesting. Another session I attended was on board presidents, like creating avenues to share and learn as colleagues. There aren't really a lot of opportunities baked into our current framework, so I'm going to look into reaching out locally and seeing if we can get that going. Ryan?
I'll keep it short here. I know that I went to a couple with updates on school law. There were a couple of sessions with updates on school law that I attended. I also attended a couple of sessions on AI in education. That was very eye-opening. There's a lot of tools out there that, you know, that appear to be useful, and I got introduced to a couple of those, and I want to play around with those a little bit before, you know, we have further discussion on those. But it really provides an opportunity for, you know, both staff and students alike to utilize some tools that are there in a smart way if they know how to use it properly. And a lot of it was equating it, going back to the calculator. When people first started having the calculator in math class, everybody thought that using a calculator was cheating. And then that went up to an online search engine, and people thought having an online search engine was cheating because you could, you know, find whatever you wanted on the internet. And so they kind of equated AI to that, but how to use it properly along the way. So there's some things that I want to dig into that a little bit further and look at. I was also able to get my hands on a presentation that talked about full-day 4K. So as we continue to have some of those conversations throughout the district and weighing those pros and cons, that I have some information from a session. I didn't attend it, but I got the presentation, so I can share that with Alex, and we can look at that a little bit further.
Alyssa Urban, do you guys want to give your highlights?
I can briefly. I went to a number of things that I felt will help us in telling our story in conjunction with creating our next strategic plan. So things about data tracking, data, data sharing with the community, and looking at your strategic plan in ways that set that up to be monitoring metrics that make sense and that are easy to share with the community. And also learned more about how instruction for our highest advanced learners, sometimes called gifted education, how the law hasn't changed, but some best practice there has changed in how we can systematize that a little bit, as well as EMLSs or support systems at the high school, which I'm eager to talk more with Justin about. But my takeaway there was, instead of looking for one or two great systems to cover all the needs that kids have at the high school, to have dozens of things and teach kids how to access the pieces that they need. So lots of really great learning.
I attended multiple sessions on school finance. One in particular that was eye-opening was a session on statewide declining enrollment and the impact of that on school districts. Tom, my session also talked about, they really emphasized special education funding in that one as well and how critical that was in their opinion moving forward. Also, just, you know, telling our story. That's another example of how important it is to tell your story as a district and keep people up to date on what you're doing and the services that you're providing the students and the community. It was also just good to connect with some professionals with other districts, and you say hi in the hallway and you end up talking shop for 20 to 30 minutes and talking about their district and what they're doing. And so that wasn't an official session, but just as valuable in talking to some of the professionals from other districts about some of the things that they're doing as well. And that was a good opportunity for that, so thank you for allowing me to go.
Thanks everyone for sharing your updates and taking the time from your schedule to do that last week. I know I really appreciate the opportunity to spend time with peers and administration in a less formal setting. I feel like we bond as a team, and it's a, it's a good time, so thank you. Anything more on that before we move on? All right, item C, construction project update. Is that you, Ryan?
Yep, that's me. What I'll start doing here is the second meeting of every month, I'll just give an update of where we're at and where the meetings that we've had during the course of that month. So, you know, we can just look for, that'll be a standing agenda item, always on that second meeting of the month. Last week, we met with a user group at the elementary school to discuss a new space that's going to be on there as far as the gym. And I know that Alex pulled members of his FIAD staff, as well as our OTPT staff. And we discussed, and we had about a two-and-a-half-hour discussion of how to best utilize the space at the elementary school, where some of that construction would go, how to utilize some of those areas. I know Justin has just pretty much come back from a tour from the whole state of Wisconsin, and I know he stretched into Minnesota here, I believe, today as well. So Justin and a team of people from the high school have gone on three trips so far to look at CTE spaces that have recently been constructed and looking and focusing on some of the curriculum that they have there so we can bring some of those ideas back to us as we begin that planning phase. We'll have our first Community Task Force meeting on Wednesday night. That will be here in the Hyder Meeting Room at 6:30. And so there's an eclectic group of people that will be here, and through the recommendation from our architect, the background of those people have some focus on the CTE areas. So that's kind of the route that we went in to bring those brains together, to have a collaboration and talk further about what we can do and looking at how we're going to best build and utilize that space that we have.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Do you also have the update on the OEC?
I do.
Okay.
So Saturday evening, I had the honor to attend the Monroe County Conservation Society Award Ceremony. And at that ceremony, John Sullivan, who just recently retired, he received, and our OEC received the Educational Tree Farm of the Year. And so they had a really nice presentation for that. He got a really nice award for, you know, to represent the district. I am getting the video that they showed and put together for that. It's very well put together, and we'll get that out so people can view that. But it's just a tribute to the amount of dedication and effort that John put into that place. Now, we have David Newman that's out there, and I know we had fifth-grade students out there today, and they're going to be out there throughout the course of this week. Thankfully, the weather's a lot nicer than it was last week, so we can take our kids, students, out there. But it was a good recognition and good publicity for our district, being recognized in Monroe County. And so when people got up and talked about how special the West Salem School Forest was outside of our school district in Monroe County, that was kind of nice, so.
Wonderful, thanks for that report, and I'm glad that you were able to attend. All right, let's move on, connection with the community. Item A is board reports by high school student reps. Brennan, Jessa?
I'll start. Okay, the girls' basketball team has had a great start to their season and are currently undefeated in the Cooley Conference. Last week, they took down Menominee and Wesby and will take on Black River Falls and Holman this week. The boys' basketball team had a big win against Fox Valley Lutheran at home this Saturday. They play at Caledonia on Thursday. The show choir team is hosting their annual extravaganza this Thursday and Friday, which is their home showcase. They will travel to Eau Claire for a competition the first weekend in February. Last night, the high school jazz band had a concert at the high school, which they were able to perform for their family and friends. The varsity wrestling team competed in a tournament in Wausau on Saturday, taking fourth as a team. They have a triangular in Verona tomorrow night against Verona and Arcadia, and they will wrestle five duels in Lodi this Saturday. The JV wrestling team competed in their state tournament on Saturday, which was also in Wausau. Sophomore Peyton King and freshman Isaac Arns both took fifth place in their weight class. Last week, a group of students from the Ecology Club attended Trees for Tomorrow. They attended many outdoor activities, including cross-country skiing and feeding birds out of their hands.
All right. The boys' hockey team took down Thomas Park Co-op Team 6-5 at home last Thursday. They'll play at Verona tomorrow. The girls' hockey team won their fourth straight game of the season on Saturday against the Icebergs in Stoughton. The dance team competed at their regional competition in DC Everest on Saturday. They qualified for state with both of their team routines, along with solos from Ella Mullenberg and McKenna Fect. Seniors Ella and Jessa placed fourth overall in the state with their duet. The team will compete at the state competition on Friday night at the Lacrosse Center. The gymnastics team had a meet in Wesby on Friday night. They got first place as a team and reached new season high with their team score. This weekend, they are traveling to Madison, where they will compete against 20 D1 teams. The high school had a college career life-ready day last Wednesday when the students came back to school for the start of the semester. The seniors spent the morning learning about social, I mean, local scholarships and different types of loans. Underclassmen prepared for the ACT, studying the different subjects and taking practice tests.
Thank you, Jessa, thank you, Brennan. Board, do we have questions? You guys do a great job on your reports, so I appreciate that. All right, next up is correspondence. Got quite a few things in the folder tonight. Let's start with the thank-yous. First up is a thank you from Patrick Barr. It says, "Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve the district for 35-plus years, 17 of which were as the board's assistant. Thank you for the neat panther, what an awesome reminder this will be of being a panther for many years. Thank you and take care." Pat Barr, West Salem High School, class of 1986. We also have a thank you for the meals and plant from the family of Ron Hanson. We have a thank you from the family of Jim Morgan for the plant that we sent in memory. We also have a thank you from the family of Gene Batzel for the plant that we sent and our expression of sympathy. Now I have a stack of proclamations from the Wisconsin DPI. So first, we have a proclamation about FFA Week, which is February 15th through the 22nd. FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And FFA promotes leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. The week of February 3rd through the 7th is declared National School Counseling Week. School counselors facilitate and support academic, social, emotional, and career development and success of students in schools throughout Wisconsin. And school counselors help all students explore their strengths and interests, overcome challenges and barriers, and access resources and support to reach their full potential. Also, the week of February 2nd through the 8th is declared Skills USA Week. Skills USA provides students with school-to-career connections and strengthens the backbone of a dependable, well-prepared workforce, fostering productivity in business and industry, and contributing to leadership in the national and international marketplace. And Skills USA provides practical, meaningful applications of basic skills, such as reading, writing, and mathematics, and advanced skills like critical thinking and reasoning, thus enhancing learning and motivation and giving all students leadership opportunities in their schools and communities. Also, on the CTE trend we have here, February, the whole month of February is declared Career and Technical Education Month. Career and technical education increase graduation rates and improves academic performance through meaningful experiences, engaging students, improving quality of education, preparing them for careers in post-secondary education, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their communities. And finally, the week of February 17th through the 21st is declared Adult Crossing Guard Recognition Week. Wisconsin's adult crossing guards provide an invaluable service in helping to ensure safe passage of our youngest, most vulnerable pedestrians, children walking between home and school. And adult crossing guards serve with a dedication that overcomes the rigors of split shifts, heavy traffic, and they stand strong enduring the face of soldering heat, bitter cold, blowing snow, and heavy rainfall. And adult school crossing guards have for more than five decades served Wisconsin communities to make them more secure, providing a safe path to learning for children. All right, that is all in the folder tonight. Next up on the agenda is public comment at board meetings for board policy 167.3. Does we have any one? We do not, so we'll, our guest is an observer, as a requirement for some senior exit project, or senior Panther portfolio credit. All right, our consent agenda includes minutes of the regular board meeting of January 13th, 2025, invoices to be paid, and co-curricular recommendations for middle school girls' basketball, high school girls' soccer, baseball, track, tennis, and softball.
Sean, I had a question on one of the bills. The bill for the roofing, that was something that was warranted, right? Yes, the $63,000 that was in the? Okay.
So we'd planned for that, we just did it a little earlier. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there additional questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Move on next to discuss, consider, and take action if appropriate regarding strategic initiatives. Item A is the approval for audit services.
Okay, so I'll turn this over to Sean and let him explain why we needed to go to an RFP for audit services, and he can, you know, let you know his process as we went through to find somebody to complete our audit.
Sure, thank you, Ryan. What happened is, is we were in the, in the past year of 2324. There we go. Sorry about that. So Tosh Ruden Temp, who was previously our auditor for the last 23, for the last 10 years, has decided to sell the business and has moved on from doing audit services to another individual. The new individual is not going to be a part of the audit services pool because they're just going to do tax. So we needed to go out for an RFP for a new auditing firm. So if you see in my information that, starting in November, I sent out requests for a new auditor to put together an RFP schedule to be received back by about mid-December. I received back two proposals. I sent out to four different firms and also listed it out on our West Salem School District website. Two did not return a bid, two did. So I connected also with an individual at CISA 4, the finance director at CISA 4, to discuss these two audit pieces. Had some additional questions in regards to both of the firms. And below is, in the executive summary that you'll see, we had two firms that bid, which was Johnson Block and Hawkins Ash CPAs. They do, just to kind of give you some feedback, they both do about 35 to 50 different school districts within the area, due to a lot of the smaller school districts. So here's kind of the layout of each year's costs. After reviewing a few of those things and looking at the factors as far as the number of hours that we will be getting during the year and what a membership cost would be as well. That happens periodically, but can happen quite randomly from the state because they pick firms throughout the state because they pick, um, firms throughout the year to do a membership audit, more like a summer s- school district membership audit. We've been picked three out of the last five years. I'm hoping for, um, a reprieve on that at some point. So these are the two firms that, um, with their qualifications in as far as how many hours that they spent and the cost portion. My recommendation based on these factors is to, um, recommend Johnson Block be our auditor for the next three years. And a three-year contract is pretty consistent around the area, so, um, after that portion, then we would go back out either for an RFP or renegotiate at this point.
And I think, is Johnson and Block who CISA4 uses?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. That's why it sounded familiar.
Yep.
I know Wade's been happy with their performance.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Are these numbers in the ballpark of what, Tosh Struden Temp?
Um, great question. They are not, um, because there are so few auditors out there doing school districts, and they all know each other's cost. We had been getting a very, um, how do I want to say it without saying good deal? Uh, a very good price over the last 10 years, and this has changed, you know, because there's so few firms who do this kind of work. And you're kind of stuck with the groups that are in here, so.
Is this something AI could do, Ryan, based on what you learned?
One thing that I did hear, so Brennan and Jessa, listen up, they said that AI doesn't work well with math. Nick, AI isn't good with math, so I don't know if we'd want to trust AI with any of our audit services and be held accountable to that.
That's good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion, uh, per Sean's recommendation, to approve Johnson Block as our school district auditor.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additional questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor of Johnson and Block?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. Next is our second Friday enrollment count.
Uh, I just wanted to give the board an update on this. There are two enrollment counts throughout the course of the year. The first one is the third Friday in September, and obviously the second one, excuse me. The second one would be the second Friday count in January, and so that allows, um, us to get and reimbursed or reimburse any other districts for any movement, uh, with students. When you compare the second Friday count in January to the third Friday count in September, there was very little change. Our in-seat numbers that you can find on the far left-hand side, uh, went up one. It was 1810 in, uh, September. It's 1811 right now, as you can see. Our total count, which is what, you know, essentially the, the ones that we get funding for, that's the far right. In September, it was 1704, right now it's 1701. But, you know, one of the things that you can see here is that our open enrollment in continues to outpace our open enrollment out. We are currently 107 students above our open enrollment out, and so those open enrollment ins, those increased by once in September, and open enroll, open enrollment out decreased by once in September. So pretty stable enrollment, um, as we look in, and that's, that's what you want to see. You don't want to see a lot of transition, um, of students coming in and out. It means that they want to stay here, uh, they're getting a, a good education, and, you know, from, coming from a parent perspective and from an educator's perspective, you know, it, it's difficult for students to transition during the middle of a school year, and it's nice to see that we don't have very much transition. So like our high school enrollment, we picked up three kids at our high school, we went down two kids at the middle school, we went up two kids at the elementary school. So very, very stable stuff across the board.
Okay, thanks. And that piece was just for our information?
Just information only.
Roll into the next?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Sounds good. Next then is our open enrollment limits for 2025, 2026 for special education and regular education.
We gave a preview of this at, uh, our last meeting, and so just a reminder to the board, when we go over this, this is setting the caps. So once we set these caps, um, these caps are set, you know, starting tomorrow going forward about allowing open enrollment students in. So if we allow an open enrollment student in tomorrow, it's going to count against that cap, um, as we continue to go forward. So as we sit here tonight, these are setting the caps so we can prepare for the 25, 26 school year. So starting off, I'll turn it over to Heidi.
Okay, so at our last board meeting, I went through the first page of Attachment H that shows you, um, our current FTEs, their caseload, uh, including referrals that were in process, um, and then a ratio, and explained that when some are weighted, it's based on the need of the student. When you look at, uh, the final page of that Attachment H, you see the recommended, uh, caps, or in this case, the recommended openings of students that we can take in each program. Do you want me to go through those, or do you have any questions about those? Since we did review these last week, I can tell you that I have, uh, connected with a school psychologist to see if there were any, uh, additional referrals that came in in the last two weeks, or if we'd had any, um, dismissals based on the information I was given, and even doubt I did not make changes to the numbers that were proposed last time we met together.
Do we have questions on the proposal, board? Okay, don't see any. You did a nice job explaining it before, so appreciate that. So are we voting on special ed separately from regular ed? Or do we want to wrap it together?
Uh, I think we can wrap it all together. So if there's any changes or modifications on, then we'll mark that down, and we'll just approve the enrollment caps once we get there. So now we'll turn it over to Alex to talk about the elementary school.
All right, so scrolling on down the document to that colorful one in your packet, um, I'll just kind of talk through each grade level and, and kind of talk about caps there. 4K is, is always the one where, um, you know, it's still really early with sometimes people, it's hard to even be thinking about your, uh, four-year-old getting, going to school the next year. So we're, we are, uh, just so everyone know, and you might have seen this, uh, out on Facebook, is we're trying to survey a little bit earlier, um, in 4K, so we got that survey out there, which was incredibly helpful. We're able to start collecting names of potential students that are coming in and, and what year they'll be coming to us, and, um, gather that data, so that's something, um, some places around us have been doing that we started just this year, and it was a really helpful thing. So, so far in 4K, um, we're around six, 61 people that have responded. We haven't had the registration yet, which will come later in the spring. We'll kind of solidify those, and, um, we expect more numbers to come in there, but, so the, the nice part about 4K is with our staffing there, if we were eight, we were to get a big flux of students coming in, we're able to, to add a section, um, as needed for that, so. So there'd be no cap to that. Going down to kindergarten, um, and I left it again in this document, it's kind of breaking down different section numbers. So five sections there would put us at, at the top of that. So, um, as we go to the, the rest of these grade levels, you'll see a highlighted version, and that's the one I'm proposing. So six sections in kindergarten would put our class, classrooms at 16, um, 16 or 15, and then we would not cap that and be able to accept, um, lots of students, which, um, especially, you know, in those younger grades, we want, we want kids coming in and want to be able to say yes to that, um, as opposed to capping those off. Going down to first grade, um, also would be looking at six sections there and not capping that as opposed to those higher, um, the higher of that range, and then putting a cap of three, so proposing not capping first grade. Second grade, looking at six sections there with, uh, a cap of 11. And then third grade going down breaks it down into six and seven. So currently, second grade had s- seven sections this year. We would go to, down to six sections, um, to get that number, and then that additional section would move up, um, to third grade there. And, um, so we'd have seven sections with classes at 19 and 20, and put a cap of 13 on that. And then fourth grade, looking at six sections and no cap for that grade level as well. Are there any questions that you have there?
Last time we talked, you said you could cover this and just by moving the staff around? Is there any increase in that, or is just, is that just staff movement at this point?
That, that's just, yeah, staff movement at that point, yep. That's just a, yeah, would be one less in the, the second grade and one more in third grade, section-wise.
Okay, the next one would be the middle school, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Wolpert.
If you scroll down, um, my page is also the colored page with cells, there are really no changes since the last board meeting. If you look on the left, those are the Board of Education guidelines, and really, we use, we're targeting 25 students, uh, for class size. So looking at 150, if you take 150 students, uh, per grade level, uh, six sections that do a little arithmetic with the current numbers, that gets you down to your open enrollment numbers. And so fifth grade currently, if you look at the purple, we've got some numbers from the past on the left, but if you move over to the right with the purple, that's this year, fifth grade, we're at 119 with no cap. And then if you go immediately to the right, the cell to the right of that in blue, that shows, uh, the fourth graders coming over there, um, to be next year's fifth graders, and it moves up to 137 where the open enrollment would be 13. And so if you move to the right and down, you can see the grade levels going, uh, year to year, and that's where it says OE. So for example, this year, sixth grade, 138 open enrollment, the cap was 12. Seventh grade, the open enrollment cap was 18. Eighth grade, the open enrollment cap was six. And then if you move to the right, that's seventh graders go to eighth, sixth grade goes seventh, so on and so forth. And so that's really where we get our, uh, open enrollment caps.
So as we look for board approval on this, I think it's best that we break each one of these down, and so it's just recorded that, what the caps are rather than just as presented. So just to clarify things, because I think this is the right way to do it. So what we'd look, what we'd be looking at is, um, for our special ed, we would look at a cap of two for early childhood. We'd look in our cross-categorical programming, we'd look at zero in K and one. We'd look at zero in second grade. We'd look at four in third grade, and we'd look at zero in fourth grade. For EBD programming, uh, we do not have any openings, so we'd set that cap at zero. For ID programming, um, we have one opening at the elementary schools, we'd set that cap at one. And for speech and language programming, we would cap that at four for the district. When it comes for the elementary school, we would have no cap on 4K. We would have no cap on kindergarten. We would have no cap on first grade. In second grade, we'd have a cap of 11. In third grade, we'd have a cap of 13. And in fourth grade, we wouldn't have a cap. And then when we look at the middle school, in fifth grade, we'd have a cap of 13. Sixth grade, we would have no cap. Seventh grade, we'd have a cap of 12. And in eighth grade, we'd have a cap of 18.
I'll make a motion to approve the caps if you don't make me repeat everything that Mr. Reber just said.
I will not make you repeat everything he said.
But we will use those numbers.
Do that.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
Can you remind me the window for open enrollment? Does that close in March, end of March?
Starts in February, and it, in February 1st, and it goes through March.
Okay.
Yep. All that information is on our district website, so. And what we do in the district, we have a, a process for that, so if somebody applies, they're not going to get a notification of whether or not they're accepted or not until late March, early April.
Good question, Bob.
I just pulled up the exact dates for you, and it's February 3rd through April 30th, uh, is when they can apply, and then our decision is made after that.
Okay. Any other questions before we take a vote? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Next is our second reading of Policy 8500.
Yeah, so this was basically, uh, deleting 8501 and 850002 that were our current policies, moving into Neola's, uh, and then we'll replace it with Neola's 8500 policy, but bring forward some of the Jane Doe Fund and other things that were proprietary to West Salem. Nothing's changed since we did the first reading, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 8500.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any, uh, Bob Golnick? Is there any additional discussion or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, second reading passes, so pursuant to what you mentioned, Eric, next up is rescinding 85 dot O1 and 85 dot O2.
Yeah, because we combined 8501 and 8502 into Policy 8500, uh, we need to rescind those policies, which means we can take those two policies off of our, um, you know, off, out of our policy book, you know, because they've essentially become Policy 8500.
I'll make a motion to rescind 8501 and 8502.
A second.
All right, thanks. I've got a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those policies are rescinded. Lastly is our list of to-do items and information requests. Ryan, what should we note that's changed, or board, do we have anything that we need added?
Just updates, the Wall of Honor. Justin and I do meet on Thursday, and so we'll talk about that when we meet on Thursday. Heidi and I will discuss open enrollment and that policy with open enrollment. I do like our process of if we're going to rescind an open enrollment, that we bring it here to the board regardless of whatever our policy says, because we know that if we bring it here to the board, um, that's, that's fairly ironclad, um, but, uh, we'll review and have a conversation on that. So the next time, uh, we get together, uh, the review of the open enrollment policy will probably be off, and I'll give an update on, either Justin or I'll give an update on the Wall of Honor.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Ryan. Board, do we have anything we want to add to the to-do items? Tom, I see that you've come up mute.
Yes. So, um, I guess what I'd like to add to our list of things to do is I'd like to finish up, uh, looking at the policy for our Panther Den and what we're doing with it and what we're allowing and not allowing. That was something we were going to do right before COVID hit, and we never got a chance to finish it. So I'd like to get that taken care of for our community, um, and start going through that whole process. Number two of list of things to do is I would like somebody on our admin team to start looking into some of this self-funded, uh, health insurance stuff and getting information and taking a peek at it and hopefully presenting to us, and that's it.
Okay. Is there anything else that we'd like to see added, board?
Just a recommendation for the Wall of Honor.
Just a recommendation for the Wall of Honor. A touch point back to the community member who thought up this idea. I think he's been waiting quite some time for some type of communication. So after you do meet, even if it's preliminary, let him know that it's, it's come to the forefront and on your radar. Thank you.
All right, anything else, Board? All right, that is the end of our agenda tonight, so I will move to adjourn. Your second name? Okay. All in favor?